Welcome to the Village of Woodbury, praying in the Lord. I ask you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please take your seats.
We will hold the minutes on this one's meeting. First item of the agenda, a little rearranging here is Woodbury common space five. Tonight is actually just a referral to the ZBA for the type of parking lot. So I'll make a motion to authorize a referral to the ZBA for any of those things.
Second.
Questions, Joe? All in favor of that? All right. We're propane so far. St. Patrick's subdivision, public hearing for a minus subdivision at site plan to create two lots, one residential and one municipal. Said property is located in 26 Hunter Street in Highland Mills and number Village of Woodbury, tax back section two, two year, block one, block three. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Board. My name is Kyle Bardwell, engineer from the Labella Associates, representing the applicant tonight. As discussed, our project is located at 26 Hunter Street in Highland Mills. Can you hear me well on this? Awesome. I was in front of the board at the meeting last month discussing the project. Following our first submission, we went back and revised our subdivision plat to simply allocate for a simple subdivision. So at this time, we're proposing no improvements. We're simply cutting the lot so that there would be a residential use.
Did they catch that?
Sure. So the lot is being split so that Lot One would be a residential, one-story frame house. And Lot Two would be the existing, previously gymnasium and school building for St. Patrick's Church. At the last meeting, obviously, we opened up for the public hearing at tonight's meeting. I'm here really just to briefly talk about the project and really wanted to open it up to any public comment. And following that, we'd have some requests for the boards following that. So at this time, I would leave it to see if there's anyone from the public that has.
I'll go first. First, let's Natalie, actually, if anybody could move that question back to the board. Natalie?
Yes, so at the last meeting, there was a question on coverage. The applicant did attempt to modify the lot lines to create a complying lot for Lot Two, which contains the school associated with coverage. But we do have additional questions. You know, first, I think that the applicant's bulk table should be revised to reflect that the Lot Two will be a school instead of a place of worship. So it should reflect that bulk criteria. So right there, the permitted maximum coverage for the lot is 20%. And right now, the applicant's plan shows 31.6%. Our rough estimate showed that maybe it was actually 40%, so we'd ask the applicant to just button up their calculations. You previously authorized a referral to the ZBA, so that still stands. I think we just want to confirm that we're all on the same page about what the request is, and we'll prepare that referral for the applicant. With respect to parking, there is no parking available on Lot Two as it is shown. So technically, there is a deficit as of that use. You know, so the applicant is proposing to share parking with the church lot. You know, our questions really are, is that appropriate under the code? You know, will the code allow you to do that based on these two uses being on separate lots where the provision in the code talks about one lot, but multiple uses on one lot? So that's a question for Kelly. You know, and we'll talk to her after the meeting or send that question to her. You know, and possibly whether or not that needs to be referred to the building inspector. So as long as the board's okay with that, we'll follow up with both of those parties after the meeting. A meets and bounds description for the easements and the subdivision should be provided. There's an existing bright of way shown at the southern edge of the property that should be reviewed with counsel to determine if there's any restrictions on development. To date, you've submitted the information required for a preliminary plat, but because there's no other agency approvals except for the ZBA, which has to be resolved prior to the planning board acting on that, you may want to look at the code requirements for final plat and just tackle that all in one approval. You know, and I think the, really, the only difference is, from your standpoint, will be the monumentation that's required for subdivisions. You know, and then again, that meets and bounds description that has to be provided regardless, so. Let's see. Regarding seeker, council prepared the Part Two and Part Three EAF. I'm not sure if, Chris, you wanted to read that, or if you want me to read it, or if you were going to wait to act on it, but.
Part Two and Part Three, this one's straight, real simple.
Yes, it is. It's nice. Okay, great, great, great. Yep, and then, let's see. Yes, so other than that, you know, per the code, upon conclusion of the public hearing, you have 45 days to make a decision. I'm not sure if that would be stayed, if this goes to the ZBA automatically, or if you would want to hold open the public hearing till your following meeting, you know, just to kind of get Kelly's consensus on these things and, you know, wrap up the issues that I've described tonight.
I think because even if you close the public hearing, you don't have a completed application yet, outstanding issues and potential referral to the ZBA, the clock won't start for about 25 days until we have a completed application in front of us, so.
There's, sure.
There's some work and some things to be done, so.
Okay.
I don't think the applicant would want to make a decision before it comes to the board. Correct?
Unless it was a great decision, sir.
So you're okay with us potentially going back to 45 days and seeing what's on, whatever happens next?
Correct, correct. I'm pretty sure. So, yes. And can I, can I speak to some of the comments?
Yes, that's all for me.
Okay. Awesome, thank you. So again, we appreciate the, being here tonight. All of the comments made sense, Natalie. There was a couple of things that we wanted to kind of maybe, we could discuss maybe offline as it relates to, technically, the existing use was a, is a place of worship, and it was actually a educational school that served that place of worship. So we felt like it would still fall under that place of worship. It was kind of like a religious school that was in conjunction with the church. So maybe we could talk about whether that would be, you know, like the existing use of being a place of worship.
Yeah. I was going to say, it's really not for me to decide. You know, we couldn't push it to the building inspector. I know Kelly has kind of weighed in, and that should be reviewed as a school, so, you know, but again, that's a referral for the building inspector.
The basic point is that if we have two separate lots now instead of four.
Correct.
And then what then, the bulk price here, you change it to a little bit religious stuff? Yeah, it's certainly not more religious than having a private school. The issue with that is because it hasn't been with the school. I have to excuse me if it's fine, but I need John to.
Oh, yeah.
We'll also break up the point, though, that it's going to be a separate lot, so it's not all the use, so it's a whole lot now.
Absolutely. That was just one thing that we thought of that we could work out with the town. The meets and bounds, we have no issue, you know, addressing that. It's just something that we wanted to wait until we had all of our lot lines perfectly approved and agreed upon before we wrote a document like that. And we'll work on all the other outstanding comments that you spoke of.
Great.
So since there's no development on Lot Two, most of our previous comments don't apply. We do have a couple of recommendations. There's some signing that's missing on the Monsignor Crati Circle Lair that should be just taken care of, and it's really up to dealing with the village superintendent of streets to make sure that he's okay. Because the pavement there is in disrepair, and if it affects the village street, so may have to be just some dressing done there so that there's no erosion or issues. So I think you can just coordinate that directly with him. And then if and when you come back in for Lot Two, we're going to want to see a traffic and parking study.
Of course.
That's it.
And we're, we're okay making the responses to Phil's comments.
At this one, I'm going to ask you to just take a seat. This will be open up to public hearing.
Okay, perfect.
So again, this is a public hearing tonight for the subdivision of St. Patrick's Rectory Building and School Religious Office Building. Before we entertain a comment on that application, we ask that be publicly respected, correct our board's direction to, correct your comments correctly to the board. If we can answer your questions, we do our best, otherwise, we'll do our best to answer them, otherwise. Before I go out to the public, I do have a letter from Father David Ryder, who is the pastor of the church, to whom it may concern. The Church of St. Patrick has actively served the community of Highland Mills and the surrounding areas since 1907. In an effort to continue our ministry, we are requesting the subdivision of former Religious Education Building and Rectory Building located at 26 Hunter Street. Other than using the gym for basketball, the Religious Education Building has been vacant since 2024, when the parish operations relocated to the Church of Sacred Heart. The rectory has been vacant since 2022. Allow the subdivision for Religious Education and Rectory Building to grant our power in greater Woodbury community the possibility for new facilities built. We greatly appreciate the consideration of this matter and look forward to receiving your thoughts and comments. Please let me know if any additional information might be helpful. Sincerely, Father Ryder. We've also received one other comment, and that will be made part of our record as well. So anybody in the second row that wishes to speak to this application, I ask if it's coming to podium in the state. So want to ask questions? If not, I'll go ahead.
What do you got?
Say your name.
Ed Scites, Hunter Street. I live right there by it. So if this gets subdivided, what's the municipal? What are they doing with that?
Well, that was an initial, what they initially were going to try to use before was a municipal use, whether the town or village provide.
Yeah.
At this point, there is no letter of interest from either the town or the village to purchase the building.
Okay.
So we need to go forward with it as it's saying right now as a Religious Education Office. In the future, if the property was to be sold, they would have to come back to this board to receive approval for any use.
Well, I know where it's going to be sold. I know who's going to buy it, you know, so.
Now, we can't.
I know, I know that, but it's just like, I live right across the street. My life's over if that ever happens. You know, it's just, it's terrible.
Well, we're doing this.
I know. Is, so why does it, why can't the church, like, donate it? I mean, you know, it's like, they're a nonprofit organization.
They have something to direct.
No, I know, yeah.
They have something to direct the church.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It could be the archdiocese, actually.
Yeah, there's nobody here representing the church here tonight, or?
As far as the archdiocese, no, no, we only represented zero there engineering and real estate. Really, they're engineering, so, sorry, I don't want to make you the real estate guy. So he's just the engineer, the archdiocese, Vincent.
So the engineer for what, for the church?
For the archdiocese, the subdivision, right?
Okay. So what's the, what is the engineer, or just a plan for subdivision?
Yes.
Okay.
He does the technical drawings and divide the two lots, or one lot to make sure they comply with that code.
I mean, it's just a residential and then municipal. I mean, it's like.
A residential and school, that's right.
Yeah, 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 okay, school. I mean, I don't, the meeting's nothing, really. You can't say, because it's not, it's not you guys. Somebody should have been here from the church to like, you know.
Hey, we can't force them to.
No, I know, yeah.
Well, you told me it wouldn't be, yes.
No, no one formed this board that the church.
Oh, that's a big waste of time.
Your best bet would be to call the, would call Sacred Heart in the morning and direct the questions to Father David. He's the representative for the local church. And then any questions he can't answer, we'd have to get to the archdiocese. And I can do my best to answer any questions you guys have. Any else in the first row? Is that Deborah? Deborah? Anybody? Second and final, second call, anybody wishing to speak to this application?
Yeah.
Step up, please.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I came in late, so I apologize. I'm not.
You just gotta say the name of what community.
Hi, my name is Patty Sullivan. I live across the street, neighbors. So obviously, we have the same concerns. I guess what I'm concerned about is the archdiocese apparently put in the application to divide the property, is that correct?
That's correct.
And their intent on that.
Any questions come to ask? They had to have been recorded before they had.
Okay.
First time in the office. Okay, it's all good. We're not, we're not.
So a municipality, I guess I need some clarity on what could be put there once you make this second property a municipality?
It's not, no, it's not going to be a municipality. It's, it's right now, it is going to be subdivided into two lots. A residential lot, which is the rectory building. The second lot is going to remain the Religious Education Office Building. They're not changing the use of it. The use is staying what it is right now.
But when it's sold, it's going to be sold.
If, if they want to change it. Again, it is, they, they, so, whether or not a church owns the property is it regardless here, it's like any property in Woodbury. The property owner has a legal right to subdivide the property as long as it conforms with the code. Right now, the engineer has provided, provided this board with a plan, that means that, those requirements. The first requirement that they're looking for is to subdivide it into lots. The second requirement they're looking for is that one lot will be remained a residential zoning property, which it is, which is the rectory building. The second is going to remain, right now, the plan they're giving to us, is going to remain a religious building. Any other change from that would require, if the property is or isn't sold, or even if the archdiocese wants to change the use of it, they would need to come back to this board to get approval to change the use of the property. And I think there, in that zoning district, I think there's like 13, there's like 13 uses that are allowed in that subdivision. So if any one of those uses wanted to be used, it would be a site plan change, they would have to come back to this board for approval. Which would then be another problem. Would be another.
So according to the letter that we received, as I understood it, the orig, the, there are two properties at discussion. One is a church that is already zoned, and one is another that is going to be subdivided. Correct?
No. So right now, that property is one big, was one big lot. The rectory building and the Religious Ed building are one large lot.
Correct.
They want to cut that lot to two, to split off the rectory building, and they want to, they want to leave which the Religious Ed building on the other side of that property.
So I thought the letter said that, and I can pull it up, that it said that the property would be split into a residential and a municipality.
The original plan was for them to split it into a municipal use. The arch, from my understanding, the archdiocese has received no interest from either the town or the village to buy the property. So with no letter of interest from a municipality, they cannot move forward with zoning it into a municipal use. So now that's why they're leaving it as a religious use right now.
Which, of course, would be concerning, because right now, the religious use of that property is very minimal, and if it's continued use, I guess that's where I'm asking as the board, when we move forward with, I suppose, the potential sale of, then it's still then, now we've just made it three properties instead of two.
No, there will still be two properties.
The church would be.
The church is separate. The church is separate. The church is its own property.
Right, so there'll be a church that has a zoning issue, the rectory building, the gym, and where the CCD is, is still the same zoning as the church, but a separate zone.
Well.
Separate lot.
Separate lot.
What I think you're getting at is, and to clarify, religious uses in the Village of Woodbury are allowing all zoning interests.
Of course.
So if, if, regardless of how many housing property is split up or divided or cut into different pieces, are religious uses allowed in any of those parcels?
It's, it's not really about the religious use, it's about the building of a new building that would be very.
That would have to be a whole new application that comes in front of the board right now. All's there is, we can do is split the property in half. The school's going to remain exactly the way it is. The rectory, they can remain a single-family home. They're not looking to expand the school, knock it down and rebuild. They're just looking to split the two properties. Once that school property is sold, we can't go any further than that. We don't have any intentions of. What we can do is what is presented in front of us right now. That's all we can do, okay? Out of that, so right now, it's just a remaining single, split the properties. Somebody comes down the road later on and buys that property that the school's on, and they want to knock it down and put up whatever. They then have to come back in front of the board and go through the whole process, get approved for that use, for that building, for whatever. Do you remember the merits of this? Oh, yeah, it gets, it's a whole, it takes on a whole. It's a brainwashed application of that. Right now, we're just looking to cut the property in half. You've everything the way it is.
So the archdi, I know, I know. Thank you, I appreciate it, appreciate it.
It will be out in front of us.
Right, of course. So as I understand it, then, the two zones, one would still be, remain a religious organization?
It would, well, it could be zoned as a school, correct? Zoned as, yeah, it could be. The current use is going to be.
As a private or pub, no, that does matter.
It's as a school, school doesn't matter. It doesn't matter religious.
That is, the zoning laws for school and public are very different.
No, they're not, ma'am.
That's not what, according to what I've known, I mean.
Unfortunately, they're not.
A public and a pri, and a Religious Education Building are two different, are the same zoning laws?
Ma'am, actually, a religious use actually has more freedom than a public use.
I know that, which is why a municipality might have been more.
But as far as Woodbury's zoning laws, a school is a school, regardless if it's public or if it's private.
Would you agree municipality might have been a less benign?
I'm not sure if we'll decide that. If a municipality made an interest in purchasing the building from the archdiocese, they then come in front of us as a municipal building. No, it's not right now.
Which is not the case.
There's, we, there's.
No interest.
So it's a subdivision, aren't we?
I know you know. I know you know.
Any other questions? All right, I'll offer a motion to close the public hearing. Second question.
We don't get to this, we don't get to view where your decision is?
There's going to be no decision.
I'm very excited. Oh, it's silly of me, I thought this was an open hearing.
There's going to be no vote on it, see, there's a lot more stuff to go right now. Second question. No questions? All in.
If it's going to go to the zoning board, I can't say anything.
No, you can't.
I just, I just wanted to ask a question. If it has not been shown, if the notices that went out, it said municipal building, and it's not that, they changed their application, why would we keep the public hearing open and not keep quiet?
Because that is exactly what was said. I have the notice, it was said that the property would be divided as a residential and municipality, not continued as a religious organization.
There's no alternative.
So this should have to be delayed, like, because.
Actually, technically, it doesn't need to be delayed. There's no decision being rendered tonight, and the public hearing, the public hearing was noticed correct. Ma'am, I understand the letter you have.
It's not noticed correct.
Yes, it is.
It should.
I'm not going to get into it back and forth tonight.
No, but then it, that just means if you can dialogue intellectually, then that means that you're afraid, and I'm letting you know that it simply states residential and municipality.
Well, agree to disagree to me.
Do you, can you look at the letter?
I have the letter, I know what the letter says.
So then we weren't, did you misinform?
Nobody misinformed you.
If it's continuing to be religious, it isn't any more, it isn't any more existent.
I will confer, council, we need three, open the public hearing, we will.
I'm just saying, yeah, it isn't.
I'm sorry?
I'm just saying, it isn't.
Okay. Well, we're going to agree to disagree.
Let me just note the letter.
All right.
The municipality.
Ma'am, the public hearing is closed. All right, we have a short environment of Part Two and Part Three. The Part Two showed that there would be no small, or sorry, no moderate to large impact. And then Part Three, no question, Part Two is answered, moderate to large impact may occur. Additionally proposed action involves subdivision with no further development or disturbance to either lot. Should the existing slot proposed to be used for a different use or used as a stolen, should be eventual or be abandoned due to lack of use, it would need to return to the land or the site. Offer motion to accept the Part Two and the Part Three. Second question. Aye. Ma'am, the hearing is closed.
This gentleman came to present something, and he didn't have.
He did, he said he wanted to. He wanted.
Thank you, Board. I appreciate you answering questions. I was going to stress to the fact that that if any improvements were to occur on site, it would require a new public hearing and coming back in front of the board. So I did want to stress that to the group that was here. So.
So you would have a need to go forward, right?
Exactly. And we'll, yep. So thank you, Board. I will see you at the next meeting.
Home Depot, review of documents submitted for parking waiver amended associated with site plan review for allocation of outdoor storage areas. Said property is located at Park Drive, South Valley, in the zone of the Village of Woodbury, tax back section two, five, block one, block fifteen, dot one.
Good evening. Doran Ballen with Kim Lee Horn on behalf of the applicant, Home Depot. We are seeking a parking waiver for a site plan amendment for proposed outdoor storage areas, which are going to create a net loss of onsite parking. So, yeah, we're here for the parking waiver.
Yes, this is the applicant's first appearance before you. Formally, the application is for an amended site plan and special permit. However, as Mr. Ballen discussed, it is, you know, the crux of this really has to do with the availability of parking after the applicant makes modifications to designate outdoor storage areas surrounding Home Depot. So based on our review of the application, the property is split by the Town of Monroe and the Village of Woodbury municipal boundary. All of the improvements are proposed within the Town of Monroe. However, the board does have authority and, you know, consent over the shared parking between all of the uses that support the business park. So our memo lists what we believe to be the existing, you know, or the approved parking for the site, you know, based on the uses that are there. There is a waiver that exists. Based on what we can see, the code allows you to consider a reduction in required parking up to 25%, where use or combination of uses on a single lot generate needs which are less than the total amount that zoning requires. Sixty, 689 spaces are required based on the applicant's information that they provided, and 580 spaces are available. So they are seeking a reduction in required parking of up to 109 spaces or a 15.8% reduction, which is within the 25% that you are able to authorize. The applicant did provide information, I believe, on the actual parking demand of the site, which will defer to your traffic consultant to weigh in on whether or not what's left over is appropriate for the uses. You may wish to refer the application to ESOs based on, you know, the availability or the rearrangement of parking and the adjustments to the uses there. An EAF should be submitted to initiate seeker, so we'll look forward to that for your next appearance. A public hearing may be scheduled or waived because this is an amended site plan. If the, you know, proposal is not significantly changing the prior use or the special permit that was authorized, there is an amendment that the board can consider. And then the only other thing that I wanted to ask or waive or raise to the board is because this does not impact your setbacks or your coverage requirements or things like that, you know, would you, in this instance, waive a site plan with the bulk table that lists the Village of Woodbury criteria, since it's really only impacted in the Town of Monroe? Okay? That's all.
We have a July 11th memo. There's a reference to a parking study. I did not get a copy of that, so we'd like to see that, number one. In terms of that parking study, it should, if it didn't address it, it should address the transient parking that occurs there. You'll go there at different times, and there's, you know, trucks that are parked there that are not customers. So that needs to be addressed. We have several recommendations. One is just a narrative of why the areas in the front portion of the building, why they're, were chosen where they are. For example, to the bottom of your plan, that is right in the main traffic area, pedestrian traffic area for access to the nursery. And, you know, the logic behind it, whether it should be in the next bay to the east of there. So we just want a narrative of why those areas were chosen, similarly relative to the area shown on the far right, upper part of the drawing. And then I think it's important for the ESOs to review the plan, especially in the rear at the west, southwesterly end of the site, it gets very tight in there. And, you know, you'll go there at times and there's already. and there's already, uh, areas that are blocked. So I think we need some signing and they're gonna have to weigh in on that area especially. Those are the primary items. I think the rest of them can be addressed. But, you know, some sort of a narrative of why those areas were chosen and whether or not there can be some slight shifts, uh, of those areas. And of course, a copy of the parking study.
Yeah, we can definitely submit the parking study, um, and we can prepare that narrative. I can tell you now, the, the, um, areas that we have shown on the site plan here, they match the existing condition. So really, the only reason is it's just what Home Depot feels is most convenient for their, you know, operations. Um, if, if the Board feels that, you know, for fire safety or pedestrian safety, um, an area should be shifted, that's definitely something, you know, we can consider with Home Depot. Um, I know area J, um, Natalie pointed out, is within a, um, O and R easement. Um, so I think that could definitely be shifted to the left. Um, yeah, we can definitely, um, deal with Home Depot and, and prepare, prepare a narrative for that.
Yeah, cause your, your main pedestrian path to the nursery entrance is right where one of these areas, and if people are, you know, you have to look at the sightlines and what's being stored in those areas, people pulling out of spaces with pedestrians. I, I think it just needs to be looked at. I understand those are the areas that were being used now, but I, they may not be the best areas.
Right.
I mean, the only comment I have is that I don't foresee wanting to give like an additional reduction in parking until there's some sort of plan in place to clean up all of the tractor trailers, mobile homes.
Yeah.
And everything, because this like entire end of the back of parking lot.
Yeah, it is.
Is disgusting.
It's disgusting. So, I mean, yeah, you're saying you have five hundred and eighty spaces available. You don't. You don't because there's, there's like three RVs parked there right now. I went there, tractor trailers. Yeah, I went there this afternoon, there were four fifty-two foot trucks all parked in there.
They basically lose that whole parking area in between.
So saying it's a, yes, our paper is available, in actuality, it's, it's not.
Yes, I'll, I'll be implying in that area.
Yeah.
That would be my only feedback on that. And with B, I think that's a, not a good spot for it. And if the, the bushes and stuff all grown on those islands anyways, you have a hard time seeing them coming there.
Sure.
Everything should be bad.
Yeah, cause even A is too close to my.
And the, well, right where they have A is where they park all of the, uh.
The vans, right?
The vans and stuff like that.
Correct.
So I, I definitely think the plan needs a little bit of work and that Home Depot needs to come up with a, a plan going forward for, if you're gonna say you have five hundred and eighty spots, actually add the spots, just write that in. I mean, I got pictures if you don't believe me, show you what that parking lot looks like.
Yeah, we can, we can submit the, um, the parking counts, um, so that you guys can review it a little bit better. The parking counts do take into account the type of vehicle that was onsite at the time. Um, so it does break down if it's a customer, if it's a, um, like you said, a, a longer, a delivery truck. Um, and I will say from the, uh, results of the parking counts, um, I'm gonna pull that up. So again, these were taken at, um, peak trip times based on the trip generation manual. Um, a hundred and thirty-two vehicles were what was, um, recorded at the time of that count. And we even looked at aerial imagery dating back, um, all the way to two thousand and one. And the maximum amount of vehicles that were parked onsite was two hundred and twenty-one. So I, you know, I do hear concern that, you know, we do say there's five hundred and eighty, maybe there's not. But the, um, actual demand onsite is, is still well below, um, that five hundred and eighty.
But when you count the vehicle, you count fifty-two foot truck as a vehicle?
Correct.
It's parked across.
And stay on text box.
They stay on text box.
I hear you, yeah.
The RVs out of there for a long set of time, between their generators, they get outside, they pop on text.
So you can say it's one vehicle, but in reality, it's taking up six, seven, eight spots for the cleanup.
It's gotta take it to account.
I hear you, yeah. Okay.
You have a question for us?
Um, I do have a couple of things. I saw you mentioned a referral to, um, Orange County for GML two thirty-nine.
Who can care, who can take care of that?
Uh, the Town of Monroe already referred us and they, um, had no further comments, so just wanted to just bring that to your attention, so you're aware.
Copy of it.
Yeah, I can forward that to you guys. Um, in terms of seeker, uh, Monroe also, um, did their review. They, um, declared it an unlisted action, unlisted action and gave us a neg deck. Um, I don't know if that has any impact on if you guys would still need to, um.
Because of the portion of project that is, uh, is on to power.
Right.
Yeah, I think it has to do with whether or not they treated it as a coordinated or uncoordinated action. So it's something that we should talk to Kelly about. Yeah.
We'll get to, we'll get to the bottom of that.
It was an uncoordinated review with, it was, yeah.
So then I think the village has to do their own.
Okay. Um, you did also mention, um, in the parking count requirements, um, a hotel and.
It's almost nearly done in a second.
Yeah, sure. Um, yeah, and the parking requirements, you mentioned the hotel and theater use. Um, you mentioned the hotel and theater use. Um, I just wanted. Might start again.
Sorry about that.
No worries. Um, in the, in the parking requirements, um, you mentioned the hotel and theater use. I just wanted to bring to your attention that that's no longer, um, a part of the commons, it's, it's all retail. Um, and yeah, that's, that's really all I have.
With respect to that last comment though, then the table should be updated to reflect the uses that are current. So, you know, for, shared for the center. And I think ultimately, we'll defer to Phil on, you know, again, the actual parking and what's there, but just to make it current.
And I think the Board will be okay with the long requirements.
Yeah.
Yeah, but essentially, the parking issue.
Uh, referral to the ESOs.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to restore the application.
Second.
All in favor? All right, we'll see you when you're back.
What is, could I just get, what is the ESO?
Uh, Emergency Services.
Okay.
So, this is the fire department, police department, and ambulance, and they'll give us everything.
Okay. Is that also like a hearing or is it just like a comment letter?
No, they, we're, they send it, they give us an email and.
We'll send it to you if we get anything back.
Sounds good. Thanks for the time, guys.
See you at the next one. It's gonna be exciting.
All right, Rocket Man, one fifty-two seven Springs Road. New materials submitted to amend the ARB enriched preservation modification, modification of a previously approved single family plot that property is located on one fifty-two seven Springs Road. And I just know it's a little bit packed up, section two on three, block one, block three, it's not.
Good evening, Joel Mann, Rocket Man Associates, behalf of the applicant. Um, the proposed, uh, there is a, a proposed pool and pool house on one fifty-two seven Springs. That's in addition to the house that's on the construction there. And the second action is that, uh, there's a change of material for the front elevation that we propose. It's probably my, hopefully, it's just a small change as we provided for the Board. We got the engineering comments from, uh, from Natalie, and I think we, most of it, all of it, we can address, it's just basically clarifications. Um, regarding to the house by itself, I saw some questions I need to clarify. I wasn't aware there was any changes, but I see now there's some layout changes, but I will make sure that it doesn't affect anything. Other than that, you can see on the top picture, that's the original, um, approved, run, approved picture, and the bottom one is the change that we're changing in the front by the entrance, the material and next, and the secondary entrance next to the garage, including the, around the garage, we're taking off that material. It's a different material, it's a similar color, different material. I can have, have my designer here, she can explain the change in color or material if there's any questions about it.
Want to hear a resolution what the, what you've changed to or?
Okay. And then the pool house by itself will be the same roof color and the same, um, the same stacker color as the house, how the house is proposed. Just a simple, clean building. Need to check on that. I think there is some trees blocking that. Um, and I think that. What? Okay. According, according to the house, it's just like, it's very small.
Well, let's do, let's break this into two, right? Let's do. Change the house, that seems, that's easy, right?
Okay.
Um, nothing really specific to, like, the home, except for the size of the home. Is it actually being reduced from the original approval? Based on the ARB form, it's like.
It's the same, it's the same footprint, but I will check on that.
Okay, yeah, cause there's a difference between the gross floor area listed on the ARB forms from the original to this.
I will check on.
By like four hundred square feet, yeah, so, um.
Maybe just the way we calculated and they calculated, I wasn't involved this first application, but I will, I will clarify that.
Okay. Um, yeah, other than that.
As long as it's not bigger than it's, uh.
Yeah, well, exactly. And, you know, when.
Right. Right.
You know, previously, you would have gone through the process of comparing its other properties and the sizes. So if it's smaller, then it's less impactful. Um, you know, rich preservation, you know, again, you've went through, you went through that process previously. The only thing I would say is during that time, the original plan showed trees that were supposed to remain and also proposed landscaping. So if there were any changes to landscaping now, that should be shown on the plan and identified for you.
I think with the area that we, I will match it up with the original site plan. Um, I think that area wasn't any specific landscaping. So we're not proposing to change anything from the landscaping.
Okay. Yeah.
Hundred percent. We know that.
Yeah, and then same thing, like limits of the retaining wall and fencing, if that's changing, it should be identified. And the stone walls that were going to be preserved, if that's changing.
Everything will stay the same.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, and then the only other thing, like, sort of more on the plot plan and, you know, plan review side, is that, uh, the development was required to develop a SWIP previously. It wasn't for the purview of your Board, but the building department to review. And because the addition of the pool house and modifications to hardscape, obviously, the impervious cover for the site is increasing. So they may need to update the SWIP, and we just recommend that be a condition of your action. Um.
I was thinking, looking at it, just looking at this as two separate, right? Let's get the change to the original ARB done, which is the Rock, Mr. Mann. You okay with doing it?
Yes.
We're doing it like this? We'll do one resolution for the change to finishes on the house. Cause that's from the original approval, then we can do separate, or second.
Oh, you wanna do just two totally separate? Do you think we, it's up to you. I mean, but I don't know if we need to.
Okay, let's go to the, I mean, really, it's up to you, do two separate.
Let's, let's, let's see what, if there's any issues for the poll. If we're good to go with that, then we can do both at the same time.
We have enough tonight to make a decision on the pool house.
I see.
What I'm saying, and if you're.
Let's see what type of information you need to see what the, basically.
I would just go back to the house.
Uh, this house.
To the left of, I would say the garage door there on the, it seems like the door is smaller and you have, what is it, the grayish trim?
Oh, you said, okay, so.
Yeah, yeah, it almost looks like it's a double door up top, and then down below.
It just, I think it's the shades, it's, it's just the shades. If you zoom, uh, you can see the.
Oh, could be, all right.
Yeah.
Just the shading.
Just the shading of the, of the rendering.
So that's as far as the changes are from.
Yeah.
The pool house.
Yeah, it's the la, we, you just.
I know, I know we have the drawings of the pool house. But the pool house is detached, correct?
Detached, yes.
Detached pool house.
Yes. It's this, this sheet, this is.
But where on the property is the pool house?
Oh, it's the first sheet, um, on the plot plans, it's showing the plot plan with the location.
This is my first sheet, I know. No, it's, I'm, I'm sorry. First thing, you mess.
Little bit. Go back up.
Yeah, this is the first, right?
No, the, there's a sheet, some sheets before that. Okay, here, here you go.
Okay, so the pool house is behind, behind the pool, behind.
Behind the pool, correct. So basically, you can see, we showed, and I think when one of Natalie's comes, maybe we'll add a, like, a bulk table to the plan. But besides that, on the plan, we showed the pool setback, the twenty feet pool setback to show that we're in compliance, and then the six foot setback for the pool house. And regarding the height, it's, um, less than twelve feet.
Oh, okay.
We'll clarify that on the drawing.
Okay. So what, what Mr. Mann is describing is the height of the pool house impacts how far it needs to be setback from the property lines. It's a minimum of six or half the height of the pool house, so. They'll, gonna, they're gonna provide plans that confirm it's complying, but they're aware that they need to provide those confirmations.
In general, we more than six feet, adjusted in one corner, but other than that, in the back, we probably about, uh, eight feet. Then in the side, when it's an angle, it's getting more like close to fifteen or something.
Is the pool there yet? Like, I know retain.
No, no.
Retain goals though.
Retaining goals are there, that's how, exactly how it's approved, and that stays.
Yeah, we don't know what the pool house is, is it physical or what?
No. I can check.
And these three, I would presume these three circles are existing, is there some sort of existing?
That's my understanding, yes, and it's going to stay.
Any questions? Should we, should we take it down of the pool, the pool house?
No. Not as per the, as per, this is based on the information that we have from the previous approval. Doesn't show any trees on the site plan. I don't know if you have it here on record, but I have it. I have it just here with me.
There, yeah, the original approval had a, a plot plan that showed the existing trees that were onsite that were supposed to remain, and then there were several proposed landscaping. I think the focus of the Board at the time was at the, um, we'll call it southwest property, like the corner, because it is a corner lot. There's that look.
Got the two, we got the seven.
Yes, exactly. So.
On the original plan, are there trees back where the pool, the pool house is going?
I don't remember exactly that. Um, trying to pull it up. It's all my paper, you know, I should have something in here. Yeah, I, I do, but I don't have.
If I can send it in to someone here, I have the original plan. So, I don't know if you wanna.
I mean, not that I email, but not.
I know.
I'm public, bud. You know what it, you know what it is, or.
Yes. Just need to find it. Right.
But I think, you know, that is something that they're gonna have to clarify on the next submission too, you know.
I just, I just, I just, I just emailed it. Yeah. What? Sure. We can provide that. The second sheet. Go to this next sheet.
That's the, the storm drainage system, and they're moving that, they're shifting that now to the east on the plan.
Yeah. Not sure if that's the last, but just using that for reference about the trees. So you can go to that corner, see that there is only that-
I'm gonna guess that it's like a error in the drafting. I don't think that's a thing.
It's a what?
Unless it's a, it's not even a stone wall. There's- Yeah, I think that may just be a incorrect hatching.
Yeah, that's, that seems like a hatch that moved away from us.
Yeah, exactly.
Over here.
Yes, yep. If you go back to their proposed plan, Chris. Yeah, so you can kind of see here, like in the back of the house, how the hardscaping is changing. They have like the brick pavers going around the pool and obviously a patio going to that. The cold tech system is behind the patio area. Yep, the front of the house is also changing slightly.
Oh, the, the walkways, yeah.
The access and walkways, so. Yeah, they're, they're gonna have to, you know, confirm coverage is complying, submit a revised SWIP to address this. And again, that's, you know, gonna be the purview of the building inspector, but the coverage the board has to confirm is complying. And then, you know, we just want to confirm that all of the original landscaping that you approved is staying the same, so.
Yeah. Take some pictures around it with some arrows. Will that require a public hearing, or? Okay. So can we go with the conditional, with the draft resolution for next month, or subject to? Okay. Give me some homework.
Yeah, just in case like the coverage is over or something like that, and-
I will make sure to address it. If I needed, we calculated, and it shouldn't be, but we'll have it addressed. I see. To change the folder.
Making a mess over here. I got too much space. I could spread out. It's not good. I am, sorry.
Okay. Two or three summits. This is a proposed single-family home, and I believe you, I own you some explanation, because I did some interesting submission there, so. Again, I told for the client too, and I just told them, just because you want, I will show it, but I, I'm telling you that's, I'm telling you that's the decision. I don't want to, I don't want to waste anyone's time. So basically, that's what the client want to. And I just told them this doesn't match to anything, anywhere. I have no comparison to that. Again, not the outside design, the materials, we can discuss that. That's not the, I'm starting about the size. So the size of the house, so that's, we can just go to the second one and not talk even about the, the preferred option. Let's go to the reduced option right away. So the reduced option, I think we did a comparison. Again, we have the map that shows the 300 foot around. And, and yes, there is only one home that we were able to match with, even though there is some line items that we can match up with other homes too. So I think if you, you can see that when you're talking about the, the floor footprint, you have the, whatever, there's one mistake at the bottom. It's not 17,000 square feet, don't worry. But you have the 33323. Then when you go to the floor two footprint, it's a little bit bigger, but when you go to the total square footage, you're talking about 2,000 square feet difference. You have a pretty big house on 195 summit. Then the garage, again, it does match to 195, but it matches to 185. So there is some comparison, and we, like we said, we removed the upper one. The preferred option is not the preferred option. This is front of you. And I hope that this can still match up and fit in within the, the comparison table. Again, when you're doing the total square footage, you have just the comparison, it's 2,000 square feet bigger. What? No, I don't want to make fun of you. Don't even look on option number one, it's- Car hobby guy. Guy has, is a car hobby.
Well, the, it's not a detached garage, right?
No, no, it's attached.
Yeah, so that's not included in your 11,987 square foot gross floor area. So that's technically going to be a 14,500 square foot home, you know. You know, if I can, we, there, there are some discrepancies on these tables, like for instance, both options list a floor, a footprint of 4,072. So obviously, the reduced scale should be smaller, I think, than the gross, than the larger ones. So there's some clarifications that we need on that. Also, again, I think that the garage really should be included in the gross floor area calculations for all of these homes, so you can kind of consider apples to apples. Two of these homes aren't within your 300 foot radius, although it's not the largest, I don't think.
Oh, no?
So you may want to take those out of your comparison. That's, let's see.
Which one is it?
I think we had 19 Stillman Y and 96 Woodward. And then, oh wait, did I, is it 19? 19 Stillman Y, yeah, so. I don't know, I like to see the home in it, but I don't know, it's up to you guys.
Good to know for next time, might help me next time, so.
Sure, yeah, less work, right?
Exactly.
Those are just the things that we had on the size, so, you know, if you-
I mean, is there any way a client can get it down to 195, that house square foot?
Exactly, to the 195, not even bigger. Here's a question, if I- If we do a detached garage, is that being called differently? Right. Yeah, place, I think for four.
Right, well, you, even, let's, if we stick with 195, 9487 square feet of the house, and 8900 for the garage.
So the, so the question is, if you can see, the 185 has a 2,000 square feet garage. Can at least match the 2,000 square feet with that.
Yeah, but I don't think it's his house.
Right. I agree, but it's- I want to take the best from every line. Yeah, right.
So we're looking at it at the bottom, so if you went 1,000 square feet bigger than the 9487, you can sharpen your raps.
Let's make sure we're okay with that.
I have to see what looks like.
But, but I mean in a general direction from the go for an exhibition.
Because remember, we've seen homes that are that large before, because of the overall design of them. When they're single story or they're like pushed back, they're, so rear. The house does not, while it would be a very large home.
Here, that's why, we tried also with this. If you go to the front design, it's, you don't see the, maybe on the right side, and we can bury that there. We have a very flat roof on that. That was one of the things, to keep this as less visible from the areas we can. Yeah. It's a stairwell design. This is a little bit of a, technically, this is a corner lot, so. Corner lot. So we did the picture from the front side. I don't know which one you choose the corner, so. One side is just narrow. I've, I will show the rendering from the, one of the sides. It will show a very narrow house. Let me sharp, we'll sharpen the pencil again. So that's specifically on the, on the start, right. I will come back with something last that I- Right. We will. I have no other option. Exactly. I am. The design part, so. Little less matter. Anything specific in the design that you're looking for that you don't like here, or just less matter? Just general? This is all the houses. We don't want to match up. Right. But still an old design from 20 years ago. Right. We'll have my designer sharpen their pencil too. So I will work on the reducing the size, she will work on the design, and we'll come back with something better.
I have no doubt.
No problem.
Sorry. Just a couple of things. You should provide some information on ridge preservation, so that the board can consider whether or not it's visible from the view corridor. The application is subject to the moratorium, because you're converting the use to private well supply to municipal use. So that's something that I didn't want-
We keep, we keeping the pri- Oh, yeah? No, well, then we'll keep it.
Okay, well, I'm glad I raised it, because it is important, and I want you guys to get too far and then have an issue, so.
Keep that. I think that might be an oversight, so.
And then, you know, also typically for your ridge preservation, you like to see whether or not any trees are being removed. In this application, obviously, the size of the home is increasing. Do you want to see your tree survey, or staking in the fields? Or what are you thinking in that regard, or maybe nothing? It's up to you. Okay.
Well, I will try to prepare on that too, so you can discuss that at the next meeting. There is actually, in the back of the house, there is, if you go back to the site. To the site plan, to the plot plan. So you can see in the back, there isn't one story. I don't remember the square footage of that. So if we take that off, we want to keep that. But if you can take that off, I can add that also to the house. Square footage.
Well, the size of the home is, you know, to your discretion regardless. Our questions on the accessory structures were whether or not they were going to remain or be removed. I think at least one is non-complying, as far as setbacks are concerned. And then if it's going to stay similar to the pool house, we'll need to know how high, how, what the height of it is. And, you know, some additional information on what the use is, so.
Let me try to work something out. Okay. 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 Anything else?
Yes, that's all.
No.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Hi, my name is Shloin Miguel from Hartman Design. On behalf of the applicant for 14 Blueberry Lane. So basically, by the last meeting, Larry was here. And I guess we were, we was confirming the size and everything. And we was asked to stake the property, which we did. We have submitted. We have stayed the clearance of the disturbance. And we have, we have received some comments, which we can address everything. Want to hear if anything else, and we wish to have a vote for a resolution.
Yes, so this is the second appearance. You previously concluded seeker. You waived the public hearing requirement. However, our notes indicate that a decision on visibility from the view corridor remains. With respect to ARB, the proposed home is 36% to 86% larger than comparison homes in terms of gross floor area. With respect to building footprint, it is 66% to 118% larger. We have a question about how many stories are provided in the home. It looks like on the floor plans, possibly there may be a third story.
No, we have just steps going up to the unharable attic.
Just to an attic?
Yes, unharable attic. As you can see, the pitch on the roof is low. So we don't have even seven feet, just for storage for chemicals.
I think that that should count towards the gross floor area calculations, but I will double.
Actually, we just, if it's gonna be counted, we can take it down. It's no, it's no, we don't have any special attention. We just have steps up. Since we anyway have an attic because of the, of the pitch of the roof, a small attic, so we put steps. If it's any, if this will increase the square footage, we can take down the steps. Yes, we put, we put access just for small storage. It's not even six foot high the attic, so.
Yeah, it's not like steps like a pull-down ladder, though.
No, we have regular steps because to be able to carry on things. But actually, it's not horrible, it's unharable space. But if it's gonna be counted, we're gonna take down the steps. It's no, we have a big unfinished basement, so it's not important. Just the client have it anyway. We put steps. Very, very flexible about it.
Okay, so that's up to the board if you want to provide any direction on that.
What? Okay. Okay, okay, we'll do that.
The applicant has provided information on visibility from the corridor for you to consider. We recommend you consider whether or not that's sufficient. As Mr. Gelb already described, they have staked the property as requested at the last appearance. So the board can discuss that and the preservation of trees on the lot. The applicant proposes a white and black home where the code prohibits the use of white. However, if the home is not visible or owing to prior development by others, the purpose of the code cannot be achieved. Then you may waive all or part of the ridge preservation requirements. And then our memo lists some recommended conditions related to the new septic system proposed and confirming that's appropriate by the building inspector. So that's all I have.
Exactly.
Yeah, and it's a much older house, or some newer house, or something like that. So the neighborhood's changing, so.
Yeah, yeah. Definitely a step in the right direction.
100%.
It's also nice that, of this house, this house is also a new house. A lot of jock.
Neighborhoods. It's a, it's a bit, yeah, it's a bit more mixed than that when you go down that block with the types of homes.
Yeah.
I looked at the staking, I think, but it's gonna, I didn't see anything there that looks like it would be like, oh my God, this is gonna be old.
Now, please.
Looked like a lot like that before. Jump, not jump, but like, well.
And that tree's one of the ones, it's a different tree, I'm sorry.
Half of my children, take them out.
They were not even full of the house.
So we did the regular public hearing, all for motion, based on the information provided by the applicant. Visit the house, house is not visible from its president. I'm basically, no way if it's presidential, it's a second.
Second. Question, poll favor.
Aye.
And then I will take a motion to have counsel draft a draft resolution approval for me in addition if it's... Second question, poll favor.
Aye.
One down.
Thank you.
184, review materials submitted for ARB and ridge preservation for the construction of the single-family dwelling. Said properties located 184 Dunneburg Road in Central Valley. It is known as the Village Woodbury Tax House, section 225, block 1, block 7, 1.
Okay, my name is Shloin Miguel from Hartman Design. It's also a single-family house, which we was in front of the board. By the last, it was a conversation about the view from the street. And we have provided the 3D renderings from Dunneburg. But it's anyway not going to be visible because you can see on the site plan that the trees will leave the trees after the septic. Everything will stay. And the tension of the client is that the house should not be visible from the road. He liked this to be in the woods. And if any, any additional question? Here to...
Sure. So since the applicant's last appearance, they have clarified that the rear of the home is the view that will be facing the view cor, or the view corridor and the public right-of-way. So that's something that the board should consider when you're looking at the ARB. The applicant did mark the limits of clearing in the field. And they've also provided a survey indicating the eight-inch diameter trees are greater that would be removed. It appears that 34 trees will be removed. So we recommend you consider whether supplemental plantings should be required under your ridge preservation criteria. Previously, you did ask for a superimposed image of the home and its setting from Dunneburg Road just to really kind of confirm whether or not, after the clearing because of the septic system and, you know, the size of the home and proximity to the roadway, you know, whether it would be visible. So, you know, if that's something that the board still wishes for the applicant to provide, you should ask for it. The home is 31% to 175% larger than homes within 300 feet in terms of gross floor area. Regarding building footprint, it's 107% to 110% larger. We recommend you consider that in terms of similarity into similarity under your code. There is an access to the property to the north that crosses this applicant's property. So the applicant should consider formalizing that easement for the neighbors, including maintenance responsibility. I'm jumping out of my wheelhouse here, and Kelly has a find that this is a type 2 action under seeker. So if the board wants to make that finding, you may. The GML referral came back in September of 2024. It's a local determination. And the board still has to make a decision on public hearing requirements. That's all I have.
And with the number of trees, that is a virgin lot, a heavily wooded virgin lot up there. So like, it's not moving. There are some, when you go to the stadium, you go to the stadium, it's not that up there. I think there's some size of trees that are going to be removed. I think it's gonna open up a lot, it'll be a lot more visible.
Oh, what I should have said, how, how visible is it between Dunneburg, Dunneburg and the back of the house?
I, I think it would be all conditioned.
Yeah.
Okay, that would be it. So I definitely condition it, so, supplemental plantings that would have to, especially to replace the number of trees. And in the back.
Yeah, I mean, listen, up here. Scrolling, sorry. Like up here where the pool, like, that you're not gonna see.
Yeah, not in the back of the house, it's where it's, well, the front and the back.
Well, this is, this is the back, the Dunneburg, so, so this is the side once they clear this out, it's not like an area. I think with leaf off, you're gonna be able to see into the back of that.
So you want to fill the hill with, with everything?
Well, I think it should be a major, everything and traditional maybe.
So everything for a scooter, for a quicker.
So everything for screening, and then traditional, right trees to replace what's been, not one for one. I'm not saying that that has to be one for one, but. Right.
What I would like to see is, is green trees, screening, all important, up on the verge.
I want to ask from the board, it's any issue if we see anything, it's just a front of a house. We have to screen it, that, we can, we are open to replant some trees. It should not be fully open, but the board wants to screen the entire house? No.
No, we're talking about the Dunneburg side.
I understand the Dunneburg side, so it's gonna be some, it's gonna be a little bit visible. It's gonna be visible. It's, we cannot, yes, just to replant some.
We're not talking two plants, maybe.
I understand. So. Correct, correct.
We're not asking to screen whole property. We're not asking one for one.
Okay, this, just I want this to make sure. So we can provide a revised plan showing the new planting and make a 3D rendering showing how it's gonna look from Dunneburg. We can take a picture from the, how it looks now and how it's gonna look with the new planting.
Yes, yeah, you guys have done it for us before, so I think you know.
Yes, okay.
I think with adequate screening, I don't want to, but I think the size would be okay with adequate screening. That's a little, that's a little area.
Okay. I'm fine with that. I'm just more concerned with what's on the road. That's my biggest concern.
I think we're gonna actually take, with the 3D rendering with additional, showing additional screening to replace what is going through.
Okay. Yes.
So 3D, 4D screening, and some digital screens.
Okay. Okay.
All right, so before we forget, I will offer a motion to take some action on this.
Second question, poll favor.
Is it, is, again?
This is, yes, no. I, I don't, I agree with this just because of where it is. What do you think you would be able to have more renderings and everything? So we hit you on the obvious one year of meeting. Would you add anything?
I think we need a site plan revised and the renderings.
My time is up.
Yes, yes. No, no, no. I think we can have in one, two weeks, everything.
So we'll, I'll offer motion to send this for a public hearing on the 12th.
Second question, poll favor.
Thank you.
All right, so get this, for two weeks before the public hearing.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Review material, uh, 16, I'm sorry, nope, 14 Blueberry.
Uh, 16.
16 Skytop, I want to tell 14 Blueberry. 16 Skytop Road, review material submitted for AMV and Ridge Preservation, but a definition of reconstruction of single-family dwelling. Said property is located 16 Skytop Road, is 100 miles north of the, section 207, block 3, block 6.
Okay, yes, so my name is Shloin Miguel from Hartman Design. So 16 Skytop. So basically, we removing an existing seasonal house. And we planning to put a new single-family house on this lot. The comparison we have provided is basically the total of square footage. Let me, a second. So the basement footprint of the house is less than the other ones, what we have in 300 feet. We have other ones, footprint is 2784, 2814, and 2867. The only thing what we have different, that we have a second floor. The total square footage, it's, it's bigger, about just 7% up from 32, from 32 Blueberry. 32 Blueberry total is 6478. We are 6953 square feet. And... If any, any questions from the board?
Yes, so in addition to the ARB and ridge preservation aspect of this application before you, the existing home is a seasonal, four-bedroom seasonal home. And they're proposing to convert this to a five-bedroom year-round home. So that does require a special permit and site plan under your code for that change. There's some important issues related to that in order for that conversion to occur. The lot should be located with access that's suitably improved to village standards or on a public road. This is a private road and it's not improved to village standards. So, you know, from Google Earth imagery, we noted that a portion of this Skytop Road is paved, but it terminates some point before the property and then it turns into gravel. The width of the road is unknown or other details of construction. The applicant also should provide proof of their right to use Skytop Road for access to this property. Additionally, a 7, 736 variance may be required under village law regarding access to the property. There is a well that's supplying the property now because of the increase from a four-to-five bedroom. And even just as part of the conversion from seasonal to year-round use, the applicant should provide proof that the well can supply, that has adequate water quality and quantity. A septic system is being proposed, so details of that design as well as testing needs to be witnessed by the village. The lot is undersized and it does require a variance from the ZBA. So the board should authorize a referral at this time. And then really because that's the threshold issue, I think, with this application. I won't even review our ARB and Ridge Preservation comments at this moment.
Yeah, I don't think, like, any of that, we might try to be selfless for rules. I think it's disappointing, all of our motions for, for, for the ZBA, any more really, not based on...
Yeah, we had a application on First, on First Avenue, what we had, the inspector having the interpretation that only if we converting a house from seasonal to all-year-round, then we need to comply with all this, with the section.